I call this meeting of the Pinellas County School Board, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, to order. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor Joe Glimp, who has come many times to our board, and we thank you for your dedication. He is from the Prince of Peace Lutheran Church here in Largo. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Vice Chairman Lisa Kane and the National Anthem. Please stand, and Pastor Glimp, would you please share your invocation with us?
Let us pray. God of all grace, we thank you for Pinellas County, our home, for all our many blessings. We thank you for the leadership of Dr. Grego in years past and the way he served this community. We praise you for raising up for us Superintendent Hendrick, for his experience, his encouraging vision for our work in days ahead. Hear our prayers, oh God, for our principals, school staff, counselors, that they may have wisdom in addressing the range of issues confronting them, especially for all those who are now taking new positions. For our maintenance staff, our bus drivers, our food service workers, office support staff, all who maintain a safe, positive environment for learning. For our teachers, their patience, their perseverance, as they use their skills both to impart knowledge and to inspire. For this board, amid all the pressures, give them courage and compassion to set policies that are most effective for all. For parents, wisdom and resolve as they're raising their children to provide a strong foundation for those children in their learning and their growth. And for our children and youth, give them strength to resist temptations, to walk where it is unsafe and to do what is unwise. Inspire in them open hearts to learn and to serve, even to help one another from kindergarten to high school and beyond. And we pray, oh God of peace, for peace and restoration in those places in the world where school buildings have been destroyed and people scattered. Peace among those who continue their aggressions. Peace and consolation for our friends in Texas, that they may know a measure of comfort in the wake of the horror they have experienced. And peace in the midst of all that troubles us and seeks to divide us as a community. Hear our prayers, oh God, for you are indeed our rock and our redeemer. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to meet your nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? It proved to the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to introduce today's video. Earlier this year, students from all levels had the chance to participate in the first ever combined elementary science showcase and STEM expo. It was a tremendous opportunity for students to showcase their learning and explore their STEM activities. Let's take a look at the wonderful video and event.
Today is all about bringing our elementary schools' scientists together. We have rooms filled of science projects from a variety of our elementary schools across the county. Other than our show boards, we have students participating in engineering design tasks. We have the scavenger hunts that students may participate in, going to each room, reading and looking at all of our different science boards to see other things that may interest them.
I think it's really cool because I really, like, I worked really hard on it, and I'm just really proud that I can have it in this big area where everyone can see it. I learned how volcano explosions or eruptions affect humans and the area around it.
I'm very proud of her. She puts in a lot of work on her project, and it's just amazing to let everyone see her shine, because she's doing a lot of research, research results, and some more things in action, and she's just becoming a well-developed student.
This year, we are combining it with our K-12 STEM showcase, so we have lots going on. On our third floor, we'll have a lot of our STEM projects on display, as well as many schools showing robotics and demonstrating different components of the robotics programs.
It's really important that people within the community who don't necessarily have all the resources at their local schools sees really what's possible for students in Pinellas County to be able to achieve through robotics and STEM. At Palm Harbor, we have, we're fortunate to have a really large amount of support for our robotics club. We have over sixty members and five different teams and robots, and we want to be able to come here to the community and show off our robots and what's possible, and to really help other people within the community maybe spark up their own robotics clubs in their schools.
This is Rosie. She is our recycling robot. We built her because we realized that in our school, even though we have recycling bins, it's not, nobody uses them because it's not very active, because nobody's like, oh, ew, recycling, ew, trash can, ew, paper. But we decided to build Rosie because then people would be like, aww, cute robot, oh, yay, recycling. Rosie is made of all recycled materials. Her box is a recycled refrigerator box. The Roomba on the bottom, she actually has a little remote right here, and I can make her go wherever she wants.
I want our parents to see what's going on in our schools. This will be a great display of what is happening in our schools across the county, as well as maybe possible careers for their students in the future, maybe some of the programs that are available in our middle and high schools. So we really want them to, this is a display of all the hard work that our students have been doing, and of course, the parent and guardian support is a huge part of that.
Great video. Now, our Public Information Officer, Isabella Mascheranes, will introduce our professional and community organizations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grego and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. Representing the SEIU and the Florida Public Services Union, we have Talmage Andrews. From the Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, we have Maria Cantones and Tiffany Ford. Members of the media and attendants are Jeff Solacek from the Tampa Bay Times. Thank you.
All right. Now, Dr. Grego, are there any recommended changes for the agenda?
Madam Chair, there's no amendments to the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion for, okay, Dr. Carr, do I have a second? Ms. Edman? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Passes six to nothing. All right. We are going to move on to Section Four. Four-one is the recognition of Superintendent Michael A. Grego, his service in Pinellas County from the Arts and Alliance Education. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Grego and staff. My name is Maria Cantones, and on behalf of Arts for Complete Education, I am honored to be here to express our gratitude to you, Dr. Grego, for your unwavering service to our Pinellas County schools and to your support of high-quality arts education. I've been an active member of ACE for, well, since its inception, so almost thirty years. We have always enjoyed a wonderful partnership with Pinellas County Schools. From the early years when ACE worked to secure dedicated art and music classrooms, until today where we continue to advocate for strong arts programs and growth in strong arts programs. When you came to Pinellas, Dr. Grego, our programs were strong. However, you challenged us to make them even stronger. You inspired us. Your commitment to excellence and student achievement is unwavering. Like all great leaders, you understand that high-quality arts education is simply one of the many components of a great school system. We are grateful that you understand just how much students can learn from excellence, can learn about excellence and perseverance through the arts. Some leaders fall into the trap of thinking that arts are not really academic, or worse yet, that students must choose between arts and other academics, not you. You know that a rich, well-rounded education is all about providing more opportunities, not fewer. As advocates, we want arts education to be recognized as a part of the whole. You get that. You demonstrated this by your attendance at and support for hundreds of performances and arts events. We noticed. Showing up is important, and we thank you. Because of your leadership and laser-like focus on continuous improvement, our arts programs have been recognized repeatedly at the state and national level. It is no surprise. As soon as you arrived in Pinellas County, you sent a clear message to community partners that arts education would be valued. In fact, you made sure that arts education was part of the district's strategic plan. As we know, what is measured is valued. Since your first day, you also sent a clear message that you value all community partnerships, arts and otherwise. You understand that we are better together. ACE operates as a committee under the umbrella of the St. Petersburg Arts Alliance. It is now my pleasure to introduce Tiffany Ford, Director of Community Advancement at the St. Petersburg Arts Alliance, who is here today representing many of Pinellas County Schools' strong arts partners. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you, Maria. It is my pleasure to join you in honoring Dr. Grego on behalf of Arts for a Complete Education. As someone with a performing arts background, a performing arts education background, I know firsthand how important it is. As others celebrating your work have noted, excellence, high achievement, and student access to the very best education are themes that are woven throughout your career. When I started working with ACE through my position at the St. Petersburg Arts Alliance, I was impressed by the commitment of the superintendent, the school board, and the community to strong arts education. This dedication was evident in so many rich community partnerships. These partners regularly work with Pinellas County Schools on student exhibitions, professional development, field trips aligned to curriculum, all-county concerts, and even a Kennedy Center Partnership. This list goes on and on. Tonight, Dr. Grego, these community partners are honored to celebrate and recognize you. The Morian Art Center, the Dali Museum, the James Museum, the St. Petersburg Museum of History, the Florida Orchestra, the Dunedin Fine Arts Center, American Stage, Ruth Eckert Hall, the Museum of Fine Arts, and the Imagine Museum, all want to show their gratitude by providing you with memberships and performance subscriptions to all their organizations. We are thrilled that you plan to stay in Pinellas County when you retire, because we know you will continue to inspire us. I speak for all of our community partners when I say thank you. Thank you for challenging us to grow and strengthen our arts education in the years to come. Keep an eye on us. We hope you will, we hope we will do you proud. Bravo, Dr. Grego, on a job extraordinarily well-done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There he is. Poor Boo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to four-point-two.
I could also leave.
No, you're not.
Not unless we do.
This is the recognition of Superintendent Michael A. Grego, leadership and service to Pinellas County Schools. Go ahead. Dr. Grego, you know you would rather not have all of these presentations by the board, and, but the board and I felt very strongly that this had to show our heartfelt thanks for all you've done over the ten years. When you arrived ten years ago, Pinellas County was struggling. We had failing schools, unacceptable graduation rates, superintendent turnover, and low staff morale. But over the past ten years, you worked tirelessly to elevate the education opportunities for all of our students and create a climate and culture of stability, persistence, and greatness. From accreditation to school choice, employee pay, and fiscal soundness, under Dr. Grego's leadership, Pinellas County Schools has been, seen a remarkable improvement in all of our areas. With a focus on educating the whole child, one of Dr. Grego's top priorities has been the expansion of all performing and visual arts programs in our district. Pinellas County Schools' art programs are known and respected throughout the nation. It is so hard to truly show how grateful we are for the work you have done and the sacrifices you have made over the last ten years. So, as a symbol of our profound gratitude to you, Dr. Grego, the school board has commissioned a piece of students' artwork to commensurate your service. This is created by Ms. Luna Garcia, a 2022 graduate of Eastlake High School. This pen and ink drawing is entitled "The Next Chapter in Life," and as you can see, depicts your attendance at graduation. Mrs. Garcia has received numerous awards for her artwork, including the 2022 Scholastic Art Gold Key and American Visions Award, the first-place award at the 2022 Walkers Rising Stars Annual Scholarship Competition. Ms. Garcia embodies the opportunities and success of our students, and we are lucky to have her with us this evening. My colleagues and I felt there was no better tribute than a piece of art created by a Pinellas County School student. We hope you hang this in a prominent place as a reminder of the thousands of lives you have impacted and improved through your forty-two-year career in public education. The entire school board would like to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge you and thank you for your commitment to the students, the teachers, and staff of Pinellas County Schools. You will be truly missed. I did pretty good. I didn't cry. Had some tears, but I didn't cry. All right.
Can I just say a moment of thanks to the, both Tiffany and Maria and everyone? This commission, I've never had anything commissioned for me, so I didn't know what, this is a first, but the most precious thing I think I've ever received, so thank you. And it's easy to, it's easy to promote excellence, you know? It's easy to, when people are really hardworking and they have such a desire and a heart and a passion for things, it's easy to support them, so. There's many areas board members that our district has included in not only the arts, but so many areas of CTE and so many areas that we, we need to continue to support, because no matter what we support, there's always a child out there that wants to engage in that, and if that child's ours, then that's the most important program that we can ever have, whether it's playing a tuba, or drawing, or, or learning how to, how to build a wall. So thank you for the support and, and truly a great partner in ACE, so thank you so much.
All right. Moving on. Members of the public have three separate opportunities to address the board when we gather for a business meeting. The first opportunity is to speak during public comments on agenda items. The next opportunity is when there is a public hearing, which, most of which are policies. And lastly, after the meeting is adjourned, we will remain for public participation when speakers address items pertaining to the general business of the district. At each opportunity for public input, board members are here to listen to you. This is not a time for us to discuss or debate. However, the board and the superintendent may clarify statements or refer the speaker to the proper staff person to help them through their, any concerns they may have. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in conducting our meetings. Whether you agree or disagree with the viewpoints expressed by the speakers, please refrain from showing audible support or disagreement, which is a disruptive and prohibited by our policy speaking, our public policy speaking. We appreciate your assistance in helping us maintain a civil and constructive environment. And remember, students are watching, and they get their, their vision from us, so let's be good role models. Ms. Houck, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members and Dr. Grego, we have two speakers for agenda items. The first is Karen Lessl, speaking to item seven-point-two-three, followed by Renee Chia, who is speaking to seven-point-one-six, eight-point-one, and eight-point-two.
Would the first speaker please come forward? And Ms. Chia, you can come to the other podium. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. This is short. I was paging through the agenda the other day, and I was very surprised when I came to seven-point-two-three, the request approval of the Health Science Education Clinical Agreement with the Freedom Square of Seminole for student internship. I just, when I had read that, I was just so happy. I worked there, and the patients or the residents that lived there are so wonderful, and I think any student that joins that partnership or anything to do with that, the only thing I really will say is, talk to these people, ask them questions. I had one resident that happened to be on the Carpathia when they were trying to get to the Titanic. I mean, you've heard, you hear amazing, amazing things from these people. Thank you.
Ms. Chia?
Good evening. I'm speaking to, first of all, to agenda item seven-point-one-six, which has to do with a contract for new teacher center. I was very happy to see the very robust compliance agreement at the end of this particular contract. I didn't know if the board has actually read through these materials, since I know often you don't read through all the materials, so I just wanted to point it out and ask you to pay particular attention to that. They are affirming and asserting that they are in compliance with all Florida laws, including the recently passed laws of House Bill Seven and HB fifteen-fifty-seven, but they also ask that you affirm you have reviewed the materials they have provided thus far and made your own determination that these materials are compliant. I've already submitted a PRA request for this. As a compliance professional, I will also be reviewing these, so hopefully we'll all be happy at the end of that day. As to eight-point-one, this particular agenda item has to do, it's just under a million dollars, to build out a leadership center for what appears to be trainings for staff. I'm not sure why we're spending a million dollars on building out a center just for trainings. This seems like a step towards your design of a ministry of education. I think that money could have been better spent by going to the teachers, since they only got a three percent raise instead of doing building build-outs for trainings. As to agenda item eight-point-two, this is a request for the approval of superintendent contract for Mr. Hendrick. Congratulations, Mr. Hendrick. My only two comments on this is, first comment, I was impressed to see that of the three candidates that you had in the final round, as equity champions in the county, you decided to pick the white straight male rather than the other two qualified candidates. Just interesting. Also, his salary is $290,000. That is a lot of money. We could pay six-point-five teachers with 290,000 a year, so I'm not sure why superintendents get paid as much as they do considering- So I'm not sure why superintendents get paid as much as they do, considering, I can't figure out what they do. I know there is some work involved, but every time I try and find out what they do and where they can intervene and, and how they can manage things for the county, the answer is always, oh, the district does that, OHR does that, oh, there's, the superintendent's not really in charge of anything. Well, if they're not really in charge of anything, why are they making so much money? So that is my comments for today. Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business. I need a motion. Dr. Carr, and I need a second. Ms. Edmund. Dr. Grego, would you like to start this before we take a vote?
Speaking about six point one?
Yes.
Yeah, so six point one is the public hearing. This is the second hearing. Dr. Heinz is primarily, this is the Student Code of Conduct that we've workshopped with the board, I think several times, and also came to the board meeting for the first hearing. There are no changes, I believe, to the second hearing, so let me turn it over to Dr. Heinz and he'll give an executive summary of terms of the changes that we've, that we've, we've made with the Student Code of Conduct. And as you know, board members, this will be going into the beginning, part of the preparation at the beginning of the next school year, too. Dr. Heinz?
Thank you. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Grego and leadership, glad to stand before you this evening to share with you the information that you reviewed in a workshop in March, in addition to you had an opportunity to review this information, and we had some discussion in April at the first reading, and today is the second reading of the, for the recommendation, recommended changes to our student policies that are found in our Student Code of Conduct. As you all know, we start this process in the fall, in January, where we bring in several, winter. Fall, I'm coming back from Alaska, so I'm messing up in my brain. All right, at any rate. We start this process, we, where we have served stakeholder groups coming in to meet with us to give feedback and recommendations as it relates to our policies and our practices. We look for those things that are obviously statutory requirements that are coming from the Florida Department of Education. In addition to that, we look for internally, what are some of our internal practices in ensuring that our practices align with our policy? Stakeholder groups represent people from our district office in terms of our student services, which consists of our counselors, our prevention office. We have also members from the Teaching and Learning Division. We have members from the Area Superintendent's Division. We also have principals who serve from different levels, elementary, middle, and high. We also involve stakeholder groups through our, our Pinellas County Classroom Teachers Association, as well as our, even our representatives from our Bus Drive Transportation Division, because we really want feedback from all stakeholder groups, and we also have students who provide feedback through our Students' Rights and Responsibility Group, as well as parents who provide feedback from our parent involvement with Dr. Brim's office and division. So this year, we conducted that process, and the information that you've seen before through workshops in our first reading are the items that are currently in front of you now for considerations for approval for moving forward to the next phase. As a brief summary of some of the items that we discussed, making some adjustments or recommendations for adjustments based on your approval for that, was policy fifty-five point zero-four, which is our dress code policy. Just as an overview of that policy, really looking at moving away from our, naming specific articles of clothing to eliminate some of the concerns that came from our student representatives, as well as our stakeholders that served in that particular arena. We made some changes there. In addition to, in our disciplinary policy, policy fifty-five point zero-seven, we made some changes and added some information regarding when students are reassigned, making sure that we look at the mental health component and making a recommendation that that is a requirement when we do a reassignment to make sure students are receiving the supports and services necessary if they need it for that particular student. And policy fifty-five point zero-eight, which is a policy on misconduct, a couple of things that we made some adjustments to is we added language in the code or the policy that reflects when a student is making a threat of nature with, when it comes to a firearm or a dangerous object, making sure that we have services in place to provide additional supports and services to those students. In addition to that, we removed the information about the civil citations, because that's not a practice that we have continued or we have done in a number of years, but it was something that we missed in the first review of this. And policy fifty-five point zero-ten, which is also similar to policy fifty-five point twelve, we added and provided families with additional days to review or to make a recommendation for an appeal of a disciplinary action that was been given by the, at the school level, or if they had a grievance. So sometimes it takes a little time for parents, sometimes to process what really happened or to get that scheduled time with the principal. We want to give them more time and eliminate some of the confusion where some, one of them was three days, another one was five days, so we just kind of made it consistent. And that was a welcomed recommendation, recommended change. In policy fifty-five point zero, fifty-five point, fifty-five hundred point eleven, which is regard, referring to our students with disabilities, there was a few changes that was made in that particular policy to provide clarification regarding those students who are being, going through the process of being identified for a specific program, giving them certain rights and protections when it comes to manifestations and making some recommendations for disciplinary consequences for those students. And again, policy fifty-five point zero thirteen, fifty-five hundred point thirteen, was about grievances. Again, it's very similar to fifty-five point ten with the number of days for a parent to file a grievance. We've also added, and I know you've had some conversations regarding the Parent Bill of Rights. We've added that policy to, as that is a requirement of the, from the Florida Department of Education. We've also adopted that policy, and we're looking to make a recommendation to add that as a part of our Student Code of Conduct as a requirement from statutory, as a statutory requirements. Other changes were minor changes. Remember, last year, we started the process of moving to gender-neutral language in our policies, and we've pretty much at that point of cleaning all that up, and so there's very minor changes to that. If approved tonight, with, based on your approval, we will move forward, as Dr. Grego has indicated, and get this information ready for printing and sharing with our school leaders, so they can be prepared to start the school year and communicate with the families the expectations regarding our policies and our Student Code of Conduct. So that's the information that we have at this time, and again, there's no changes since you've reviewed this information in April, and we look forward to having your support in this process.
Thank you, Dr. Heinz. Is there any discussion by board members? Okay. Mr. Kupersky?
Madam Chair, I just want to note for the record that this is a public hearing, and there was an opportunity for the public to speak specifically to this item, but no speakers have signed up. Thank you.
All right, so let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it passes six to nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda. Mrs. Cook, do I have a second? Mr. Dudley? All in favor of the approval, say aye. Any noes? It passes six to nothing. All right. Moving along. Let's go to the non-consent. Agenda eight point one, request the approval of the amendment to agreement number one with Row Architecture Incorporated for architectural and contract administrative, administration services in connection with the Pinellas County Schools Leadership Center in the amount of eight hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. This is resulting in a total fee of nine thousand, nine dollars and seven hundred and eighty, nine thousand, nine dollars and seven hundred and eighty-nine. Just can't say that right. A lot of money. All right. I need a motion. Second. Mr. Dudley? All right, Dr.?
Yes, Madam Chair, and to the public, this is a project that I know this board and our staff has been very excited about, and that is to finally get a professional development center for our district, of which teachers, administrators, support staff, every employee of our school district can access. It's going to be a tremendously flexible environment, but it's going to be one that, which we can look forward to and have as a home across the street in any way, and it's also a major improvement to, right now, we have no particular space to do a lot of this, this work. I want to thank, though, a couple of individuals. As you know, this particular item is a architectural agreement and contract that you'll be approving. I want to step back and say thank you to our, this was also a legislative priority by our school board, the amount of four, five million dollars that we received from the state legislature. I want to thank Speaker Sprols. I want to thank all of our legislative delegation for getting behind this, and I want to thank the governor. As you know, he vetoed a lot of, a lot of items, and he chose to really support this item, and he saw a purpose in it. His office asked us to draft and to take a look at something that you have here at your desk area, and this is what we, we sent them. I want to thank Mr. Herbig, who will say a few words on, on this, and also your own legislative liaison, Megan Fay and Ron LaFace, really worked this issue throughout the legislative delegation, Politechsel, the Professional Development Department. So there's a lot of folks who came together to make this truly a reality. It's going to be a state-of-the-art. It's going to be something that our, our employees can certainly enjoy, learn together, collaborate with, and, and our Professional Development Department will also benefit. I want to ask Mr. Herbig to say a few words in, in terms of the timeline and, and just the process that you'll be seeing today. It's, as I mentioned before, it's the architectural, we had a concept that you've seen, and Row Architects, then be charged with providing a detailed schematic drawing for the CM.
Yes, thank, thank you, Dr. Grego, and as he said, and there's a lot of people to thank for this, and the, what we want to be able to do with Row Architects is that, if you remember last fall, you approved a contract with Row for, it was actually a two-part contract. The first part was to have a conceptual design. Some of those images are on your handout today, and we're going to show some on, I think, the video as well. The second part of the contract is for them to do the actual design of the building itself, which includes all the mechanical, the electrical, plumbing, the structural, everything else that goes into the building. What we're expecting is if this is approved today, that Row Architects should be done with this design around the start of 2023. If this is approved today as well, we will also go out and immediately advertise for a construction manager to assist them in the development of those, of those designs as well. And so I think we do have a picture up in front of you now, and for the public to see as well. And board members, we handed everybody this one-page document that we did share with the legislative delegation. But these images are for the public to be able to see as well. It's a little bit bigger of an image. This first one you see is a site plan for where the building would sit on the property. It will be to the west of the property, which is across the street, where the Professional Development or the Discovery Center stands right now. And you can kind of see the general layout of the building itself. You have a large room and two kind of smaller rooms, breakout rooms on the bottom of that picture that you see that can be closed off, and so you could have three pretty large groups there having training at the same time, or you could bring in one large group and break off into kind of ancillary type of training, and then bring everybody back together as well. But again, this, this new facility will be located to the western part of the property, and will blend in with the rest of the neighborhood. The next slide that we have to share is just an interior rendition or rendering of the great, kind of the great room or the, the large room. You can kind of tell all the way on the left side of that image is, where you see that little ECS logo, would be one of those breakout rooms that a retractable wall could be closed, and again, you could have different type of training in there if you want to, be quiet, and, and people would be able to go on with whatever they're doing in the, in the larger room at the same time. And then the last image we have is just, again, a rendering. It may look like this. It may look a little bit different. But this would be a rendering of the exterior and the front of the building, the front entrance. And this would be, I was going to say, if you were kind of standing in our property on the southeast corner, but it kind of looks like you're in the middle of the street. And, but again, you have an idea of what the building may look like. We've asked Row Architects to make sure that they include a component to, for solar energy, and we want to make sure that our energy use of this building is very small, and we want to try to keep the footprint of the building small as well, so. Again, what we're looking at is if this is approved today to have that final design around the start or beginning of 2023, and looking at construction then would commence probably around a little after spring break of 2023, or maybe that summer.
Yeah, board members, I want to thank you, because teachers, support staff, they deserve a, what I consider a, a place that they can meet and train and not feel like they're in a side room someplace, and this will be centrally located, obviously, where we are in Largo. But also, we use our other schools for the same purposes, too, so it's not just this building. Also, we'll open it up and be discussing and talking with the University of South Florida and St. Pete College, but primarily University of South Florida for teacher training programs, so that our teachers don't have to travel so far, especially courses that may be held in Tampa that could be held right here in our Professional Development Center. So a lot of possibilities to make life easier for, and provide greater access for instructional staff. But thank you for your support. This has been a long time coming, and I'm very grateful that, that this will happen in a few years. Thank you.
Are there any comments by the board before we vote? Okay, Dr. Carr?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Grego, for your leadership in this. It has been several years that we've been aspiring to accomplish this goal, and it, we are an organization that relies on the professional development of people. We're a people business. So when we treat our staff as professionals, and we allow staff to grow and develop in a professional setting, it gives a great deal of respect for the profession, and hopefully will model that level of respect and admiration for the profession, so future students will see it as a potential field for themselves to join and become a part of, so. Thank you. You've advocated for this for quite some time, and I think it's really, speaks also to your relationship and the rapport and the amount of respect you have, folks have for you in Tallahassee, so thank you.
Mr. Dudley, did you want to speak? Oh, okay. All right, anyone else? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the approval of the amendment to the agreement? Say aye. Any opposed? All right, six to nothing. All right. This has come to the big moment. The approval of the Superintendent Employment Agreement with Kevin K. Hendrick. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kupersky at this time.
After you take a motion.
Oh, that's right, sorry. I get so excited. All right, I need a motion. With everybody, okay. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Kupersky, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think Mr. Hendrick would appreciate being validly appointed, so. On January sixth of this year, which simultaneously seems like yesterday and a long, long time ago, Dr. Grego announced his retirement. After that, the board took immediate action and put motions into place, set motions into place to hire a consultant. The Florida School Board Association held focus groups, community forums. They held a survey that thousands of people responded to. They, they hosted a public meet and greet with the three finalists. And then, just last month, on May seventeenth, in a special meeting, you voted among the three finalists to select Mr. Kevin Hendrick as the next superintendent. However, that action did not hire him as your next superintendent, because you had to negotiate an agreement with him, bring that agreement forward, and that is what you have in front of you today. With the chair, Mrs. Long, I worked with Mr. Hendrick and his representative. We negotiated the contract you see in front of you. I know all of you have looked at it, because I've spoken with each one of you, and I am very satisfied with the terms of the agreement, and I believe all of you are as well. So with that, you have in, in front of you the actual formal hiring of your next superintendent, Mr. Hendrick, with the approval of this agreement. So if you have any questions about the contract itself, I'm happy So if you have any questions about the contract itself, I'm happy to answer those. But at this time, Madam Chair, I believe it's been tradition if you would like to ask Mr. Hendrick if you would like to say any words.
Yes, Mr. Hendrick?
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members, for the trust you're placing in me tonight and my ability to effectively implement our vision of 100% student success for all students in Pinellas County. I'm excited to serve as the 18th superintendent in our 110-year history as a school district, and I'm grateful to all those who have supported me along the way, my friends, colleagues, community members, and especially my family, and in particular, my parents, who entrusted me to this system nearly 40 years ago and have supported me along the way every day since then. Now, soon, I hope, after your vote, I'll have the opportunity, but also the responsibility, to strengthen our district even further and to work with our incredible team to make sure every student has the resources and opportunity to reach their full potential. We have so many innovative and powerful programs underway in our district. And here in the next couple of weeks and months, we'll continue to work with our community partners to accelerate many of those that we've started recently, like our Early Learning Initiative, like our VPK expansion, the Innovation Foundation and TB-12 Foundation work that we've started, expanding our Elevating Excellence in College and Career Centers to every single one of our high schools and continuing with other programs within Teaching and Learning and other divisions to make our district the very, very best it can be. I'm also excited about a refocus on improving our school climate, as I shared in my interview, and high expectations for student achievement and behavior. As superintendent, I am eager to collaborate with staff, families, community members, the public, and others to continue the great work of the past decade and lift the district to the next level. We have many groups in our schools that are interested in what we do. Those are in our schools and in our community. They want to know what we teach, what we read, how we lead, and how we entrust our care of our students. In working with community groups, schools, and other stakeholders, I will ensure that decisions that are made do not create winners and losers in our communities, but only that decisions are guided by what creates winning outcomes for our students. As I have throughout my career, I promise to serve with integrity, respect, and an unwavering focus for our children. Over the course of the last month, I've had a number of opportunities to work on this transition. I want to thank the board for your support over the last several weeks. And I especially want to thank Dr. Grego and Dr. Corbett for their support as well. I've had lots of chances to talk about Dr. Grego in the last month. It's been pretty fun. Many of those have been in front of large audiences, including here in this boardroom with our principals and others. But we've sort of used this passing of the baton, going back to his days as a cross-country and track coach. And I have accepted that baton and look forward to running the race and taking full advantage of the support that's been given me. So I thank our board, our community, the folks in this room, and many, many others watching. And I look forward to continuing the great tradition of this district. Thank you.
Anyone like to comment? You dropped. Well, Mr. Hendrick, we all have our faith 100% behind you. We know that you're going to do a fantastic job, and this is a very great moment for Pinellas County Schools.
Thank you.
So with that, let's take a vote. All in favor of making Mr. Kevin Hendrick Superintendent of Pinellas County Schools, say aye. All right, it passes unanimously. Mr. Hendrick, you are officially our new superintendent. Okay, items introduced by the superintendent. Dr. Grego?
It's a really hard act to follow. Congratulations, Mr. Hendrick. Board members, you've made a remarkable choice. He's going to do a fabulous job, and he's worth every penny that you're paying him and more so. It's a really difficult job, and anybody wants to find out more about it can certainly do so. Let me share with you some of the things that are happening under his leadership also. The Summer Bridge Program, as you know, it's a somewhat shortened program, but still longer hours, and it started several Mondays ago, but the summer is well underway. I want to thank everyone. There's an attendance incentive program that is being conducted through here, and also progress monitoring to parents, which is in addition. I'm just real pleased of the new things. We also have safety officers in every one of our schools, as we have in the past too. So that is going very well. Thank you, Mr. Herbig, for the Food and Nutrition Department and Transportation. As you know, we have Transportation fully engaged this summer in addition. I want to thank the board members and for your support of the YMCA Partnership Middle School. We had the groundbreaking ceremony that we had over 100 people show up, and we had members of groups and even alumni from the Riviera Middle School graduates. And I understand there's a little bit of ground swelling for the naming of that school. And I think you're going to hear from the Riviera Middle School alumni for that too. So anyway, that's something that the board and others will have to decide. But as you know, the YMCA is planning on opening in the split semester of 2023 with us hiring principals, naming of schools, and opening up fully as a middle school in '24, '25 school year. Thank you, Mr. Herbig, and our Communications Department. We sweat a little bit that day, but it was all worth it. It was very hot. So hopefully, in our ribbon-cutting ceremony, you'll be air-conditioned, and we'll enjoy it. Mr. Hendrick mentioned something else I know the board has been on and off about. You'll be hearing more about, and that's the TB-12 Foundation. Tom Brady, his number is 12, for those of you aren't football fans. But that is, for the first time ever in the United States, coming here to Pinellas County Schools. We'll be piloting some 10 schools that will be piloted this fall to enhance health and wellness curriculum of 8th grade through 10th grade to incorporate the TB-12 methods in more of a holistic model. Thanks to Ashley Grimes, Al Bennett, Pinellas Educational Foundation for really bringing together the TB-12 Foundation and our district and our educational foundation. And this is going to be an exciting, exciting project to watch over the next several years. Also, I'm very proud to announce that we have, for the first time ever, the new Air Force Junior ROTC program will be coming to St. Petersburg High School. This will be the first time we have an Air Force Junior ROTC program. I thank Mark Hunt for his diligence in ensuring that one branch of the military or any of them are in our schools where they have. We have branches now in the Army, Navy, Marine Corps. And as you know, we opened up the first Coast Guard at Pinellas Park High Schools. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, for your work in this area. And we look forward to the new Air Force Junior ROTC program at St. Petersburg High School. As you know, it's been conducted in the news and others about teacher hiring. I want to recognize Ms. Texel and the HR department. We had our virtual job fair on June 1. We also participated in the Great Florida Teach-In on June 4. Our recruitment teams are out in full swing. We've made several candidates of recommendations for employment. We continue to nip at it. We will not sacrifice or, what I say, compromise the hiring. We want the very best teachers to come to certainly Pinellas County. Mr. Herbig also, it seems like I'm mentioning his name quite a bit here, so you don't want to give him a swelled head. But Mr. Herbig also conducted with Chief Williams and Dennis Russo our annual Safety Day that was very successful. A lot of planning on all of these trainings. They held it on May 31st. Everything from secure facilities, daily practices, the things that we were starting to really ensure that we not only have things on paper, but we actually execute these things. And we see that drills do work. Unfortunately, we see that throughout the United States, and we're going to continue to ensure that our schools are safe and that we're prepared. Also want to give thanks that we, and many of you know Edward Wallace. He serves as Lakewood Elementary School's Head Plan Operator. But just last week, he was named as one of the finalist, 2022 Florida School-related employee. Certainly was one of our favorites. And when he went up to Tallahassee, we got the call that he is one of the state's finalists. And we get a lot of support staff finalists from our district, and then a lot of times winners too. So I want to just thank him, congratulate him for his service. He's served as Head Plan Operator at Lakewood Elementary School since 2009. We also have the Barbara Bauer Officer from our own Pinellas County Schools Police who's awarded the Florida Association of School Resource Officers Lifetime Achievement Award recently. The award recognizes individuals who demonstrate extraordinary accomplishments. She is the longest-serving Pinellas County Schools Police Department Officer. She joined the district and the department in 1989. And she's been with K-9 Officer, you know, for 25 years. So congratulations, Barbara. Also recognized, I think he's here, Chief Luke Williams, yeah, there he is, is a finalist in the K-12 Campus Safety Director of the Year. He's one of just six finalists, and his law enforcement career spans more than 30 years. We're happy to have him. He is a Hollins High graduate, and he's community-minded. And he certainly will find out that award recipient, the Director of the Year, will be announced later on this month. So congratulations, Chief Williams, for representing us so well. And I know my last one, but I can go on. But Donna Sicilian was also honored for a Student Services Executive Director that she is with our district for the Academic Excellence Award with St. Petersburg College. This is an institution that recognized her. Ms. Sicilian has served on the college's Human Services Advisory Committee more than 20 years. And these are a lot of years that people have provided services, and they rightfully should be recognized. Nominated by Diane Clark, the CEO and Operations of Par. And so with that, and I know, board members, this is my last board meeting. I've been going to school board meetings either from this seat or others for, I was looking at it this morning, close to 32 years. We used to have to, superintendent I worked under required any level administrator to come as maybe they'll not appreciate that, but the importance of understanding the dynamics of a community in the board. So you had to be there, and that started about 1990. So I've been to a lot of board meetings. People ask me if I'll come back to board meetings. My answer is no. And I may watch you, but I doubt unless it's some real purpose. But I want to thank this board for working as a cohesive and collaborative body. This is a superintendent's dream, that the board members work together very well. Work with the superintendent, yes, number one. But number two, our lives are so much easier when the board works well together and you collaborate together. Thank you so much. And during some really challenging times at times, you know, if it's not one thing, it's the other, and life continues to throw challenges at you. But it's the willingness and your ability to work together as a group that makes this job so worthwhile and makes those challenges, where we solve those issues together. And that's what it's all about. I want to thank the staff for always pushing us to the next level. I also want to thank the families in this community for entrusting us. What I always say, with the most precious commodity, their children, their own students. And I want to thank this community, especially the many, many partners that we have with the understanding, as Mr. Hendrick said, that we can't do this work alone. We have to do it together, and we have to do it with other people supporting each other. And I want to thank not only this board, but my own family, and thank you for the accomplishments that we've had together. So the best of luck. Mr. Hendrick will serve you exceedingly well. He's an extremely capable individual, and you've made a great choice, as I mentioned before. And I look forward to just watching and just smiling of the tremendous accomplishments that will continue to be at the doorstep of Pinellas County Schools. This is a great community, great school district. Thank you for being a great board. It's been my honor to serve you as a board. Thanks.
Okay, items introduced by the school board attorney.
I rarely give a report, but seeing as this is Dr. Grego's last meeting, I'd like to make it as long as possible. No, just kidding. But in all seriousness, Dr. Grego, I want to thank you from my chair for the leadership that you've provided to the district and the assistance you've given to me personally. So congratulations.
Items introduced by the board. Ms. Cook?
There you go. There we go. I had the opportunity to speak at the retirement event that was held. And actually, that's when it finally hit me, that Dr. Grego was retiring. I had a hard time then, and I'm going to have a harder time now unless I get it under control. You have led this district with integrity and consistency. You have created opportunities for students to really achieve at a higher level. You have pushed the students, as well as staff, to all be better than we were the day before. You have done an excellent job with that. You have done it with kind of the right amount of seriousness and humor. And you will be missed. You will definitely be missed. I want to thank you for taking the time to develop the leaders that you have there in this district. Mr. Hendrick is a perfect example of it, but he is one of many who are sitting over there, many of them who could have walked into the position of superintendent because you have encouraged them to grow as individuals. You've also encouraged the teachers to grow and the students as well. We, as a board, have grown. And I will say once again, it has been an honor to work with you. Thank you.
Well, I was reflecting back. I'm thinking when I was in school, Gus Sackus was the superintendent, I believe. That's been a long time ago.
He was superintendent when I was teaching. What do you mean when you were in school?
I'm not going any further. Fill in the blanks as you will. And through the years, we've had many superintendents, obviously. And when I decided to run for the school board, I was really anxious to see what made you tick. Because, I mean, I heard, you know, as a teacher, and you hear different things. And I'm one of those guys that like to hear it for myself and see it for myself. And I'll tell you what, people don't understand or don't realize, you've done a great, great, great job. He has put the school districts on the, school district on the map. It's an envy of many districts throughout the state of Florida. And I really like your style. I'm a little surprised on your indecision, however. You know what I'm going to say? On your indecision to, you know, buy a Cayman Porsche. But that's my only criticism. What are you waiting on? Well, you'll be, I'll be pumping flowers out of the grave, man. But seriously, Mike, it's been a real, real, real pleasure. And I'm glad I got the opportunity to work with you. And I'm real excited about what kind of a trainer you are because I know Kevin Hendrick very well. And I think that, you know, you're here, and there's not a whole lot of room left still at the top. I think Kevin's just enough to get in just above that little opening at the top. Because I think he is going to do a lot of the things and that you have put in place. He's been a part of all that. And I, again, from standpoint of a parent, a grandparent, and teacher, coach. and teacher, coach, appreciate what you've done. And I'm looking for the next episode in our journey here as a school district. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dr. Carr?
Thank you. We share an interest in reading biographies and historical figures and leader, studying leadership and what that means. And, and thinking about this being your last meeting, I tried to think of who, who could it be that he might like to be associated with. And I have chosen Cincinnatus. And not just because of the big red machine. I know you're thinking baseball right away or Cincinnati. But he was the Roman dictator who was, who actually led them through crisis. And when you came to the district, we had had turnover in our leadership and some issues to deal with in the financial reserves. And as an, it's not as glamorous or as fun as the arts. But the financial piece that, that you took in the reins with and steered us through was an initial crisis. And then to develop all of the pieces associated with Marjorie Stoneman Douglas and our increased advocacy for more safety in our schools. And then COVID. So those have all been serious crisis issues that you have steered us through. And perhaps the selfless devotion that he's known for, Cincinnatus, really mirrors the selfless devotion you've had. Because I'm going to reiterate how frequently you show up. You're early, you're late, and you're there for everything. And what perhaps he's well-known for, and people use that adjective to describe individuals, is also the ability to give up the reins. You have done this, gone through this transition with such grace. And as Mrs. Cook said, led, lifted many of those around you. And that's really the servant leadership that you inspired all of us to acquire in our training and in our professional development. As the captain of the ship, you have really helped others grow and develop and be able to steer their own ships forward. So thank you and I appreciate working with you. It's been a pleasure.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I do want to, I did not expect to get so emotional.
At this meeting, but I am actually. Because Dr. Grego, your leadership is incredible. And I've spoke with so many people in the district who have said so many positive things about you. And when I first came to this Board, I did not know you well and I wouldn't, you know, our interactions were, you know, all business, at least in the beginning. And so many times, unknowingly, you had said small things just to encourage leadership in me as a person that have helped me grow, that have helped me to learn, that have helped me to improve on my own leadership skills. And by watching you over the years, I have seen such a depth of integrity and understanding of other people and who you are. And it was the training at the Stavros Center where we discussed this, where I really felt like, you know, I understood just greater who you were. And from that point forward, I really understood your leadership style in a much more in-depth way from that training that we did as a Board. And I just want you to know how much you are appreciated and how much you've made a difference in so many small ways that people take with us, no matter where we go. And each person who has been under your leadership and has been encouraged by you and has been led to push themselves to greater things will have that piece of you. And, you know, I say this a lot in teaching, you know, you just kind of sprinkle out the seeds and they grow as they may and they are a part of you. And I hope that in your retirement, you will think of those things often and how many hundreds of thousands of times that you have touched other people and made their lives better and greater in so many small and great ways. We've been leading the, the Board meeting or ending the Board meeting on a positive note. And this week, one of my positives was I've just been really focused on the use of time. It's been something that's come up to me throughout this week, over and over and over, how precious that our time is. Not only with each other, because we don't know when it's going to end and when it's going to transition. But this time of year is a lot about those transitions. We have students graduating. We have positions changing. We have retirements, you know, throughout the county, not just Dr. Grego, but many wonderful teachers and staff that might be choosing to, to shift into a new, a new phase of life. And it's through those phases of life that, you know, you, you have moments to reflect on what you're doing and why you're doing it, truly why. And so I have been thinking a lot this week about how we use our time and how important it is for us to remain focused, that the time we have is really the most precious commodity that each one of us has. And when we share that with others, how we share that time and how we choose to share that time is truly reflective of where your heart is. And so the greatest thing you have given so many is your time. Because that is the one commodity you cannot get back. It's non-renewable. You get what you have and how you spend it is so important. And so, you know, we need to remember always to spend our time wisely. And the Psalm that this comes from is Psalm 90:12, which is to teach us to use wisely all the time we have. And so I thank you so much for the time you've given us in the district.
Ms. Edman?
So, sorry, I laugh because I remember being a teacher in the classroom and seeing Dr. Grego walk through the halls and all the other feelings that people might tend to get when their superintendent arrives. And then I was elected to the school board and had the opportunity to work hand in hand, agree and disagree, but move forward with the mission of 100% student success. So, Dr. Grego, it's been a pleasure to work with you and I wish you the best in your retirement. I also have some, some reports back to the Board from the Florida School Board Association Summer Conference, which took place last week. And I participated in several of the committee meetings, so I'll provide those highlights in writing just so you can have that information for reference. So Florida School Board of Directors table asking, sending a resolution to the Governor regarding Florida participating in the CDC survey. What they decided to ask the Board of Directors to do is to go back to their members and get feedback from their members to bring back to the Board of Directors so that FSBA can make a decision. Also, at that general meeting, they voted on Board of Directors. So that's something that I believe we'll discuss later on, but I just wanted to mention that as well as electing the new, or swearing in the new Board of Directors for FSBA, which includes the President, President-elect, Vice President and the Treasurer, who were all sworn in. And Mrs. Messina, who led us through the Superintendent search. She will continue her charge as the CEO of FSBA. And again, the rest of my comments will come to you all in writing. So thank you.
And Dr. Grego, I'm not going to cry. You know, I taught for 30-some years in this district, been through five Superintendents. And I came on this Board with an attitude that things needed to change because of what I heard in the teachers lounge. And it was my brother-in-law who told me, who's been a Superintendent for years in Indiana, said, "Get to know him because you're going to see something totally different. Don't listen to the, just the people out there, but make your own opinion." And I started getting to know you. You have helped me grow as a school board member. I, I respect you so much for what you've done for the teachers, for the administrators, for this district, but most important, what you've done for our children. I had two children of my own that just, one just graduated. And I was proud to send both of my kids to public school. I had a choice not to send them, but if you want to lead a district, you've got to also show support. And so I chose to put them in and they are both, they graduated with such honors. And Kayla would not be where she is ready to enter med school without your leadership. Because you, you, you know, the several times she spoke to you, she said, "Mom, he gets it and he's positive and he doesn't dwell on the negative." And I think that says a lot. And you've taught me not to dwell on the negatives and to look for the positives. And you've done a great job and I'm going to miss you so much. That doesn't mean I don't want you, Mr. Hendrick, because I do. But you've been a wonderful leader. You've been a wonderful teacher. And I know that, I understand the sacrifices that Superintendents' wives make. And you have a beautiful family. So go out and enjoy every minute of your next chapter of life. But thank you for giving us so much through the past 10 years.
Okay, so with that, Mrs. Edman was right. We need to discuss. I'm going to bring it up now and then at our workshop, we'll dive in deeper. We need to decide our FSBA members. Right now, Mrs. Cook is the lead of the Directors Board Representative. And Ms. Kane is the alternative. And then Advocacy, right now it is Ms. Kane and myself. So, next workshop, we will discuss who will take forward and, not in our next, right here?
No, yeah, Madam Chair, your next workshop will be after your regular meeting on June 28th and this needs to be done by July 1st. So
Okay.
What I would suggest you do is that you have any discussion right here in the sunshine that you need to have. And we can either take a vote on it today if you want, or we can create a written agenda and put it on your June 28th regular meeting agenda.
Okay. And then let's talk about the Director position. Mrs. Cook, do you still want?
Let me turn this on. I am willing to serve. Continue. It's a two-year position. If there is someone who would like to move into that position, I will gladly, you know, step back and say, this is what, this is not a lifetime commitment that nobody can get in here unless I'm willing to give it up. But if someone is interested in it, I will support that. But if not, I will gladly serve in that position.
Okay, do we have anyone that wants to serve? Ms. Edman, you do. Ms. Kane, you are on it. Do you want to continue to serve? Okay. Anyone else? All right, so it is, we'll take a vote. It's Ms. Edman as the leader and Ms. Kane as an alternative.
Motion to, to
Okay.
Have Ms. Edman and Ms. Kane as alternatives.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Ms. Edman, you will be the member on the Board of Directors. And Ms. Kane, you're the alternative. Now Advocacy, right now it's Ms. Kane and I was the alternative. Are you still interested in doing that, Ms. Kane?
I believe that Ms. Cook said if someone else wants to do it, that's, that I'm okay.
With that, but I'm interested in doing it again if possible.
Okay. And Ms. Edman, you would like to do?
I'm interested in serving as the alternate.
Okay. Okay, so it would be Ms. Kane as the first and then Ms. Edman as the alternate. Do I have a motion? Ms. Kane, a second. And Ms. Cook, I'm sorry, a second. Dr. Carr, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we have Ms. Edman, the main representative of the Advocacy Committee. And Ms. Kane?
No, 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 no.
Board of, oh, I was going to do that next. We already did Board of Directors. It's Ms. Edman and Ms. Kane. And now it's Ms. Edman and Ms. Kane again. Oh, okay, wait a minute. Ms. Kane is, and then Ms. Edman is the alternate. Okay. All right. All right, so Dr. Corbett, do you have any Board requests?
No, Madam Chair, I did not record any tonight.
Okay. All right, well, we're going to adjourn and we will have our school board evaluation after the meeting. So right now, we are going to go to public comment. So.